Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. And welcome to the first of several budget study sessions. I know it's a budget study session. I see my colleague, Councilman Yusefian, on his way bustling up onto the dais. I've got my excedrin. Hope you have yours.
I've got my red pen.
And he's got his red pen. And so, well, it's kind of pink, so maybe we'll get off easy today. Good morning. We are here for the budget study session this morning. And by the way, it's April Tuesday, April 29, 2008. And it's about 9:42 in the morning. This morning is going to be kind of a start and an overview. We are going to take some speaker cards from the public. We're going to first go to our presentation from the city, which we're going to keep relatively brief as an opening. Then I plan to go to the public to hear from them. Also, I've been informed that some people have some medical issues and so on. They need to get out of here and some other things to attend to. And it is a workday, so we will do that. And then we will move to some questions and comments and other provoking and thought-provoking comments and interaction with my colleagues, which I'm going to limit to a 20-minute piece this morning and see how we make out time-wise. We are limited on our amount of time, and I want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to ask questions. And we'll see how it goes. And just so you understand where I'm coming from with all of this, and I haven't talked with my colleagues to see where they are with it, but I will be willing to bet that they are not far off. We know that we're going to get through a process here. The key is not to kill each other doing it. The key is to find out the information we need to find out, do what we need to do, adjust what we need to adjust, and get from point A to point Z with as little bloodshed and tears as possible. So with that, let me turn it over to Mr. Starbird, who can tell us who will be kicking off for the city.
Roll call?
Why don't we do that? Mr. Weaver points out all of the -- I'm so happy you're here for that reason and others. But let's do the roll call and be on the record and everything. How's that? Okay, we're done. Good night, folks. We'll see you -- sorry. Okay. Mr. City Clerk, if you would.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Here.
Montero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Now then, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. I appreciate your opening remarks, particularly about the, hopefully, lack of bloodshed in this and future budget study sessions. One only has to pick up just about any newspaper to read about cities that are facing challenges in this current economic light. Glendale is no exception, although I think you'll find with a broad view of our fiscal condition, Glendale continues to be in a rather enviable position relative to reserves and our financial strength, although the upcoming year is going to present some considerable challenges as we work to balance ongoing revenues with the continuing desire for existing and new and increased services as this community in its dynamic way continues to change. Let me introduce two individuals this morning who are going to do the lion's share of the presentation with me, chipping in periodically. Ron Allers, who you know, Assistant Director of Finance, who really holds a great deal of the historical knowledge and has been through many of these budget processes, and will be doing part of the presentation here this morning. And Bill Foxon, Director of Finance, who has been part of my effort to throw some additional resources at the Finance Department so that we can, in a relatively short period of time, pull together what is one of the most important policy documents and decisions this city council has in any year, which is to set the standards and allocate the resources for programs and projects in the upcoming fiscal year. With that, let me turn very quickly and give you a snapshot of what we would hope to accomplish this morning. First is to do what I call a reconciliation of the capital improvement program that you'll feel like we just did this, because it was just in March when you approved the capital improvement program. We call it the '07-'08 capital improvement program, but actually, you set a tone for the upcoming 10 years, and then every year we do a rolling additional year and update of that. We want to come back and touch base again, because some of the estimates that we used in March when we spoke to you about the CIP and you approved it have changed, and so we want to point out to you the steps we've taken to ensure that the CIP can maintain its integrity and the general fund which contributes to it and an associated fund are being maintained at appropriate reserve levels. Next, we'll want to touch on our estimates from this point in time, roughly nine or 10 months through the year, where we expect the city's general broad budget to end the year with particular focus on the general fund. And then the same for the general fund for '07-'08 fiscal year, the current one, and then a brief picture on what we see as the challenges ahead in '08-'09. And then particularly important at this step of our process, right at the beginning, is to get the council's feedback on what you would like us to be focusing on, issues, concerns, questions, interests, as we begin to put together strategies for bringing you a balanced budget, emphasis on balanced, because our charter requires the city manager present to you and you adopt before the end of June, by July 1 of '08, a balanced budget for all of our operating departments and all the funds of the city. So getting your feedback at this stage of those things that are of particular interest to you is very important, because we have about two months to go through a great deal of work to develop some strategies. And we'd like to ferret out those interests now, so we can be working on them and addressing them, as opposed to later after we're halfway down the road, so to speak. And then lastly, we'll put up a schedule of future budget study sessions and topics to make sure that everybody's calendars are coordinated and to make sure that we have the topics you'd like to see scheduled for a future budget study session. This is sort of the endless beginning of summer, but it does have to be concluded by July 1. So with that, let me turn to Bill or Ron, who's going to kick it off? Ron?
I'll start us off.
Okay.
To start us off, we'll talk about our CIP and liability funding that Mr. Starbird mentioned. Our last meeting was on March 4, where we presented to council the latest CIP funding for these 10 years, starting in this current year, 2007-8. And to bring us back to that point, there is actually no changes in the CIP due to this reconciliation. The CIP has no modifications based on the March 4 study session, except for what council told us to go back and move from one year to the next, dealing with either Rock Haven or Freeway Parkside A and so forth, which we have done. But what I wanted to do here was give you kind of a reconciliation between what we had talked about in March, which was more of a cash basis versus a fund balance look at our -- at these three funds, which is really our general fund reserves and how our general fund was funding and contributing to our CIP and to our liability. So with that, I'll walk through the slide. Back in March, we had talked about having available reserves of $7.67 million. And that wasn't exactly the case, as this reconciliation details. What's in cash and really not a part of reserves are these next four items that are labeled 2, 3, 4, and 5. So we really need to subtract these items out when we're talking about what's available in the general fund reserve. One is encumbrances. Encumbrances are just promises to pay where we have signed a contract with a vendor and we just have not taken delivery of the goods and we have not subsequently -- and also haven't paid for those goods, but we do have a promise to pay as far as a contract. That's slightly over $1 million. General fund, one-time transfer to the CIP, this was left out of the calculation of $467,000. If you remember, we had a number of different sources to fund the CIP for this first year. One was excess or surplus from '06-'07. One was this one, which was surplus from '07-'08. And then one was the ongoing $1.5 million. This one was left out of the calculation, the reserves. I don't know why I forgot it, but it was left out. So this was $467,000. Next one is each year, as the council is well aware, our budget grows in our general fund. So with the annual growth in the budget of whatever millions of dollars for us, in order to keep up our 31% reserve, which was our stated goal this year, we need to set aside an additional $848,000, just due to the normal growth in the budget size. And then the next difference is basically just cash is different from reserve, because we have payables and receivables and other things in our balance sheet that make up that difference. So the difference, as you see here, is $5,278,000. So what we really have as far as a reserve available is about $2.4 million.
Mr. Mayor, quick comment on this slide. What we're pointing out here, because we reference general fund reserves, this was our anticipation of the additional savings we would have at the end of '07-'08. We thought we would have $7,670,000. Correct, Ron? And what he's pointed out here is that because that estimate was based on a cash position and as a result had not included these balance sheet items effectively that reduces the amount of money actually available to contribute, then the savings at the end of '07-'08 is actually projected $2,400,000.
Correct.
So the good news is, we have savings under any circumstance at the end of '07-'08, but it's going to be less than we had anticipated. As we move to -- as we move from this slide, and wait to see if you have any -- actually, I think you're going to hold questions until the end.
I am going to hold questions till the end of the presentation, unless it's a question about, "Mr. Mayor, your hair is on fire. You should do something." Other than that, I think I'd like to hold comments till the end of the presentation.
So our focus in doing the CIP and balancing pressure on the liability fund from the settlements for the slides that resulted in the storms in '05, which, including slope repair, was upwards of $12.5 million, no small amount of cost, especially relative to the impact on both our liability fund and the general fund, was to keep our reserve at 31%. And I think you felt we were doing that when you adopted the CIP. However, we were off, as this points out, by about $5.3 million. To maintain the CIP plan that you had approved and to address what was going to be a very significant hit on our liability fund, where we have considerable cash reserves, but in light of the pressure of settlements and slope fix of about $2.6 million, was going to put considerable pressure on the fiscal picture for that fund. So as we realized we had this shortfall, we had to go back and revisit those three funds again, again, with the objective of keeping the general fund reserve at 31%, maintaining the CIP plan as you had approved it, and three, then, addressing the financial condition of the liability reserve. And with that, we took the following steps.
And with that, we'll talk quickly about the liability fund as we did back in March and the outcome of it. The -- God, the red numbers aren't showing up that well. My apologies. We started off this fiscal year in the fund balance having it be negative $2.9 million. And that was actually okay. The fund has a little over $9 million in cash, or used to have a little over $9 million in cash before these latest payouts that we've had in the last month or so. And recognizing that, we are recognizing claims that are going to be payable in the future, and it's a time series where not all the claims come due in any one month or actually in any one year. They come due over a series of years. And so having a negative $2.9 million actually was okay because of the size of the cash position in the fund being greater than $9 million. But dealing with these huge liability claims payments that we've had, we needed to take a closer look. So here's our quick summary of the fund. Revenues this year of $6,150,000. And then we have our expenses, and a lot of these are actually cash. So the liability claims payments, this is actually cash going out the door of $13.3 million this fiscal year. And so that's why we needed to address it, because it would have thrown this fund into an actual negative cash position, because these are actual checks that are taken as written. We have a decrease in our claims accrual of $5 million. Once we have actually paid the claims, we had accrued them, we had recognized the expense over time as the lawsuits happened or as the claims were initially filed. So this actually reduces our expenses $5 million. We still have our insurance premiums, because we have a general liability policy along with some other policies that are paid out of this fund. And then we have our normal operating expenses in this fund of $780,000. So we had subtotal of expenses of $10 million with revenue of $6.15. That left us with a deficit in the fund of $3.9 million and an ending fund balance of roughly $6.8 million. Ending fund balance has now grown large, but it's also in light of having a large negative cash position that we need to have some cash infusion into the fund. We had come to council in March talking about a one-time transfer out of the general fund into the liability fund of $6.5 million. That would have done two things. It would have thrown our cash from a negative to a decent-sized positive of roughly $4 to $5 million in the fund, and that was a good thing. It also would have brought our fund balance very close to zero, would stand at a negative $279,000. So this was a good strategy, but in light of the previous slide that we just walked through, we don't have the $6.5. What we have is $2.5. We took a look and --
Ron, let me interject there. Had we made the $6.5 million contribution of the general fund, it would have dropped the reserve to 27%. Roughly 27%.
Correct.
And so wanting to maintain the 31%, we went back and looked at option B, which is an alternative strategy.
This alternative strategy, the liability fund pays the claims for the entire city. So it pays the claims of the general fund, as well as it pays for the claims that may arise out of our other operating departments, be that Glendale Water and Power or our sewer operations or refuse disposal operations or any one of other funds that the city has, be it from community development and housing to parks to those enterprise that I mentioned or fire paramedic or so forth. So what we did is we conducted an analysis and actually took a look at some claims payments and where the claims are arising from and from what source. And based on that analysis, we can transfer from other funds than the general fund another $4 million, so that we keep at our $6.5 million cash infusion into this fund to have it maintain a going concern as a business and also to reduce this negative fund balance, if you will, to close enough to zero at negative $279,000. And with that, we will move on to talk about the city budget.
Well, good morning. This slide here represents kind of a snapshot of the entire city's operations at the fund type level, and it's what I consider probably a good summary level from which further drill down will be necessary. And as we have future budget study sessions, we will be talking about each of these funds in much more detail. But to give you a snapshot today, we wanted to share with you where we were at the beginning of the year. And then what we've done is we've taken a forecast of 2007 and 2008, and the numbers that we have here have been forecast through March 31st. So what we wanted to do is give you the best available information that we have, both for revenues and expenditures, and then our projected ending balance as of 6/30/2008. And as you can see, in several of the funds, we have a greater level of expenditures than revenues, and we will be getting into those reasons as we go further into the presentations in the ensuing weeks. But from the general fund perspective, which is probably the topic of our most interest at this point, we're, for the year, forecasting an $8.2 million deficit. This next slide, again, is almost a mirror image of our prior slide.
Just give me one second. I'm sorry. Let's go back to the last slide.
The number, Bob, is if you take the revenues of $162.1 minus the expenditures of $170.3.
So essentially, the general fund's fund balance is being drawn down by roughly $8 million from beginning balance to ending balance of the year. Now, the ending balance is 6/30/08, roughly $8 million less, and that's because of the various transfers that are -- remember, we had a year-end savings of $2.5 million. So to talk about it being a deficit, I think, isn't the best description, because you end the year with a savings in the general fund, then you made conscious decisions to transfer that savings and other resources from the general fund into the CIP, as well as contributing to the liability fund. So you've taken reserves and invested them. Deficit seems to imply that on an operating basis, you've spent more than you've taken in. That's not the case. It ends up with a drawdown of your reserves of $8 million, but you've made a conscious decision to invest that money either in your CIP or in the liability fund for the purpose of offsetting those claims that we had to settle.
Okay, let's continue.
Let me just add one little bit of kind of footnote to Mr. Starbird's comments. We have an ensuing slide that will help explain the 8.2 deficit, and I'm sorry that everybody jumped to the wrong conclusion, because there are several reasons for that. This next slide is taking a snapshot of what we anticipate as of today, the 2008-2009 budget. And this still needs to have work done on it. As you can see, the general fund, where we set revenues of $164.6 and expenditures of $174, that produces a $9.4 million deficit at this point. And this is an area where the various city departments are working to try to close that gap. And so over the next ensuing weeks, we've developed various strategies that we will share with you on how we can close the gap that currently exists. But in evaluating each of these, in the ensuing weeks, we'll take a look at each of the revenues as well as the expenses and get into further detail. As Mr. Starbird alluded to earlier, we talked about the funding levels, and in the middle column, we actually have three different analyses here, the 2006-7. This is the actual end-of-the-year results. The second column, where it says 2007-8, that's our forecast as of March 31, 2008. This is where we think we'll be as of the end of the year. And then our final column on the right, the 2008-9, is the preliminary budget information that we've assembled to date. And as you go down the various columns, we have various reasons and the various broad revenues and expense categories. On the bottom line, you will see that we have identified the $8.2 million of our deficit during the fiscal year 2007-8. In 2008-9, we're projecting at this point a $9.4 million deficit, prior to doing any of the additional analysis that needs to be done to close the existing gap. The next two slides are basically going to take a look at the various general fund revenues that we have. We've broken them down by the various types. We've tried to give you a snapshot of, from a historical perspective, of the 2006-7 budget versus actual. And then we've done another analysis of our original budget for the 2007-8 period, as well as a revised budget. And in essence, there's very little difference between the original budget and the revised budget. And then our initial forecast, what we think it's going to be like at the end of the year. So you can see in some areas, we're actually going to be better off, and then there's other areas that we don't think we're going to be as well off as we initially anticipated. Again, this is the remainder of the items. We were going to try to put it on one slide, but it becomes so hard to read, we wanted to put it on two. But bottom line, you can see that our forecast at the end of the year, our revenues are going to be $162 million versus our original budget of $161,370. This next slide is an analysis that we put together to take a look at our operating revenues in the general fund over a series of a number of years. The bar charts are drawn by two different cuts. The first cut is the revenue, which is the blue, and the expense is the purple. And what we're trying to depict here is, on an ongoing basis, year after year, what the city's revenues have looked like and then what the expenses look like. Now, on the expenses, what we've done is we've isolated to general operating expenses minus one-time expense transfers out. So this means if there is a large purchase of property, for example, that would be excluded from the expense category, because our goal was to isolate what are the operating expenses as opposed to what we call one-time activities that may have occurred. And you can see for each of the years, going all the way back to 1999, other than 2004-5, we've been able to have greater revenues than we have expenses. But as we go closer to our '08-'09, you can see that our expenses have suddenly become larger than the revenues. And this is something that we anticipate, that a lot of effort will have to be made over the next ensuing weeks in order to bring those two things in line. But the importance of this is to really identify the fact that the revenues have been in the past in line with the expenses, and in fact, we've actually been able to have less expenses than the overall operating revenues. Currently, we've taken some actions, and the first step that was taken was that there's been a moratorium on recruitment for all the vacant positions at this point, so that everything's been placed on hold. And then a memorandum was sent from the Finance Department to all the operating departments, asking them to do some scenarios at 5%, 7.5%, and 10% budget reductions, and to place them in priority order, so that we would know those that would be able to be done away with first versus those that are the most critical to the operation, that would be the least likely that we would want to impact. So those are the actions that we've taken. And we're doing various analysis in-house, taking a look at vacant positions to try to identify those areas where there can be some additional savings. Today, we're going to ask for council direction, and we want to be able to get your input as we go through for your priorities, things that you believe that need to be addressed, any concerns that you have, and then seek your input, so that we have direction on which we can go forward. And finally, we've put together what I think is a pretty rigorous schedule, starting with next week. We want to be able to go through all the different funds and each of the organizations, so that you can have a feel for the nature of their operations, and then work through various solutions that we need to in order to close the funding gap. The one item that we have up on the board that we would like to get some feedback today is on May 20th, we wanted to make sure that there was going to be enough council available so that we could actually have a budget session.
What date is that again? I'm sorry.
That's May 20th.
Well, ICSC will be over. It depends on when my colleagues will actually return.
Right.
So we may have to --
We have calendaring scheduled for today, so we'll get a good sense of that. The reason we ask that is if you're not able to attend, then we'll have to do some internal juggling or maybe some doubling up in order to get caught up.
Well, we'll give you some green apples to help you double up, and in the meantime, let's press on with this. We'll figure out the calendar.
We did include some supplemental data for the benefit of council as well as the public, so that they could see the individual items that make up some of the summary level of information provided, and that will be available, and we can discuss it if necessary.
Okay. Thank you. What I'd like to do now, and I do thank you for all that, by the way, don't go away. You have anxious people from the public and colleagues. Let me go to the public. The first speaker is Herbert Milano, followed by Bruce Philpott. Yes. Thank you.
How many minutes?
Let me just see here. Let me announce right now that, and I don't know how many comments my colleague, Mr. Weaver, has. He has a conflict at 11:30. We may run about 20 minutes long, beyond 11:30, in other words. So I may want to make sure your comments are up early on, just because I'd like to give the public, because of the few cards we have, I'd like to give them five minutes as opposed to three minutes. And that's -- so. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Milano? Good morning, and...
Good morning, Mayor Draymond, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. A couple of years ago, actually, time flies here, in 2004, 2005, the city staff and finance presented a budget that gave you some fairly significant warnings concerning their projections at the time. And I was, to a great extent, concerned about the significant increases in the police budget vis-à-vis the trends, the lowering trends in crime trends, which I presented to you that I got from the Department of Justice. And I felt at the time, and this is my opinion, that those increases were significantly high and were not justified by the trends in the lower crime statistics that Glendale was fortunate to have. So what I'd like to pinpoint is 12 slides from the 2005 presentation. This is the city's information. And if I can find this page, there we go. All right, so, all right, this was the revenue and expense projections, the Long Beach Plan back in 2004, 2005. And I want to go to graph number six. If you notice here, the projections for 2007 and 2008 and 2009, look at that, the revenues were exceeding the expenses significantly, so it felt as a quite comfortable projection. We go over to slide number seven, and here's where you begin to see it much more clearly, how the surpluses basically were estimated back then. And there were certain assumptions made at the time, let me move forward, that the numerous costs right here, it says numerous potential costs and risks are not included in these projections. All right, let me move over to slide number 12. And here is the major one. The blue one is our safety budget, and this is for the purse, the pension plans. And notice the significant increase that's taking place beginning in roughly '05, '06, and '08. So the pensions as a direct cost of, I think, overtime and the increases in police staffing has hit the city significantly with regard to its budget. Let me move forward. Okay? Clearly, it says no recession is included in the basic revenue expense projections. Now, even though they told you that historically there is the likelihood of a recession within a 10-year period of time. So basically, you took an optimistic approach to your long-term budgeting as opposed to taking a conservative approach that has been the history of Glendale for a very, very long time. Let me move over to slide number 21. Okay? And it says right here, "To maximize the effectiveness and cost-saving measures. This particular line should be followed up, in my opinion, with significant policies." And delineating, it says, "Here are the 10, 12, 20 policies that we're taking, and then measure them year to year to see if they have actually taken effect." I, you know, of all the things I have watched, I have not seen any report on those policies of cost savings and where they are. Let me move over to slide number 23. Okay? Look at the expectations back then. It was for revenues to come in from the Americana and Embassy Suites back to 2007. Let me move over to slide 25. And of course, this is your bread and butter right here, where your property tax revenues basically are 21% of your overall, of the general fund. And this baby is the one that's beginning to hit you, and so does this one, because in a recession, this number and this number are the ones that are going to impact you very, very hard. All right, so let's move over to slide 41. All right. So here's your property tax, regular property tax revenues, and this is the educational revenues augmentation fund that basically instead of California grabs from the education budget and gives it to the cities, and of course, you have the vehicle license fees as well. Well, vehicle license fees are going to be impacted as well, and of course, you're dependent on the state of California for what comes out in this particular area. So those projections again put you in a significant amount of jeopardy. And here is your assessed valuation, again, an optimistic estimate on property valuations that they would continue as they had been for those, you know, those few years, you know, of 2005, 2006. And the projection was that it was going to continue, good times was going to continue on and off. And here is slide 43, with a little bit more realistic, the ups and downs of the realities based upon what we were expecting as a steady projection. That's the conclusion of the PowerPoint. And so what I want to sort of highlight, and there are many other issues that I could bring up, is that if you were to look at the Bureau of Justice Statistics and the crimes decline going back, I just did it from 1985 forward, they have been in a steady decline. Unfortunately, I don't have my graph that I could show you. So that if you were to add the additional expenses that you basically brought in by the additional staffing and police, it basically has had minor, very little additional significance because the trend was already in a downward scale. So when you look at, if I can wrap it up?
If you can wrap it up in a sentence or two, please.
If you begin to take a look primarily at the safety budget and the overtime, I think you're going to find a lot of solutions to this problem. Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Milano. The next speaker is Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and also to Bruce Philpott for letting me go first. I'm Barry Allen. Wow. Here we are with eight weeks left before the council passes a budget. A new acting director of finance who we're all counting on to give us, that's right, you and the public, the correct numbers. Each year, Glendale is one of 900 members of the Government Finance Officers Association receives a meaningless certificate of achievement, you've all seen this, for the comprehensive annual financial report that's conspicuously posted in the front of the caffir. The city once again spent more than it took in even though they counted pass-through monies from the superior government agencies twice. Fortunately, knowledgeable and forthright members of the public kept you from spending $41 million on rebuilding two unneeded fire stations. For one-fifth of that amount, you were able to purchase Rockhaven for public use. Mayor Draymond and council member Eusefian need the help of one more council member, a council member that's willing to put the interest of the public first and foremost in demanding fiscal accountability from city management. Council member Nigerian, who once said that accountability is just a cute word, and council members Quintero and Weaver, who had nothing except accolades for the former acting director of finance, all need to reevaluate their positions on the financial and economic welfare of the city. Mr. Nigerian told the public he is an economist. An economist must be knowledgeable as to how much money is available to invest in the long and short term, and is very dependent on good record-keeping from the finance department. The council should have known from not only public records and financial reports from the outside auditor that the pretty pictures were only a facade. Even council member Weaver correctly would say, "We don't have the money for this," particular venture, and the others wouldn't listen or wouldn't question staff. Here are the red flags. Between 2005 and '07, pension payments doubled to $20 million. The investable cash dropped from $1.5 billion to $1.3. Capital outlay went up $30 million in one year. Capital outlay included non-capital expenses such as car washes and credit card charges and $20,000 to Rightmind Consulting for database management. $93 million in accrued unfunded post and retirement benefits. Employees are given take-home cars, fuel, insurance, and aren't even required to list their mileage. The MSB seismic retrofit was financed by encumbering the fire apparatus and the buses. Today, the city can't tell the public how much the retrofit has actually cost. The enterprise businesses are not well thought out. Other than the GWP, they lose money. One suggestion would be to make them lease concessions without using expensive city employees. Last week, you heard from the HR director that you should pay more to get better. The same mantra you hear whenever management is promoting excessive salaries when hiring new directors, and which is not backed by HR studies of hiring best practices. It's time to ask serious questions of management and demand accountability. Management will be here until they retire on a bonnetful pension, while each of you will be scrounging money for your next election, answering questions as to why you let the public's money go to waste. Don't accept management's statement that something isn't true. Make them show you the documents. We heard Dr. Espiritu make statements about the sidewalks, about the curb cuts, the beeline, and the next bus system. Management said Espiritu was wrong. Last week, DPW director Zern finally said in response to Mr. Eusefian that the next bus system doesn't work, a vindication of Dr. Espiritu. Will the city be able to fund the new $30 million beeline contract while continuing such irresponsible behavior as granting exorbitant salaries while using outside consultants and law firms to do the work? Beware the Stockholm Syndrome. I'm Barry Allen, vanguard for accountability in the city. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Philpott, five minutes. And for those of you just tuning in, I think the Stockholm Syndrome is the love and enjoyment of pickled herring.
Oh. I didn't know that.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. It's still morning, though.
Morning, and members of the council. It's usually in the afternoon or evening, but I'm here. It's time I am going to actually remember. I have two slides at the end of the presentation, but it'll be right at the end. I guess during budget sessions, it sounds like the gloves come off. I guess when it comes to people's dollars, I guess it should be fairly brawly in nature. I have been making, I've been presenting ways to save $15 million annually in the fire department that will enhance operational effectiveness by cutting response times and staffing at the level that will meet the safety needs of the public. This is an ongoing effort that is now occurring during oral communications on Tuesday evenings. There are two other budgetary items that can capture nearly $1 million in addition that I haven't addressed at all. A big part of the savings occurs with the elimination of the battalion chief's driver and administrative aide. With a full-cost burden for one aide at $225,000 a year, the total annual savings comes to somewhere around $800,000 when position coverage overtime is included. While that represents only 10% of the savings, you would realize if you decided to staff back to three on engine and truck companies, it is still significant. Neither Pasadena nor Burbank Fire Departments staff such a position. There are only two departments in the entire county of Los Angeles that do, LA City and Beverly Hills. The aide's administrative duties can be assigned to the captain of Truck Company 21. That truck company is located at the same fire station that houses the battalion chief. Since the truck company averages less than 30 minutes per shift responding on calls, this supervisor has available time to perform administrative duties for the battalion chief. To manage the driver function, one of the firefighters assigned to Truck or Engine 21 could perform the duties of driving the battalion chief to calls that require his presence. This is a cost-effective way to use existing personnel resources. To address the second issue, that can recover some additional overtime in the fire department, it first is necessary to cite some statistics. Glendale firefighters average 504 hours of compensated time off each year. This factors into 21 shifts or over two months of non-work per year. You can easily see how position coverage overtime can get out of control. Fire management has to get better controls on how it dispenses overtime. I will show two slides that will show this need. The first slide shows two firefighters working overtime for the same position. As soon as the first paid overtime firefighter gets to work, he immediately leaves to attend a union function for 12 hours. While he is gone, a second firefighter is paid overtime to fill that position coverage. I don't know if that is clear or not, but those are the two positions, overtime it says for here and overtime for him. As soon as he gets to work, he leaves to a union meeting, and he doesn't come back until way late at 7 o'clock in the evening, when the other overtime firefighter then leaves. The second slide shows the same two firefighters working overtime on another day. This time, the captain, who is a union representative, immediately leaves again to attend another union meeting, this time for eight and a half hours. The obvious question is, why hire someone to work an overtime shift when he is going to be gone for a significant portion of it? These kinds of management decisions do not bode well for taxpayers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Philpott. All right, I would like to go to my colleagues, and I will then, and I'll also speak last on that. Let me start with Mr. Weaver. Mr. Weaver, you have the biggest time crunch this morning of all of us.
Well, I guess at this point, we're talking in general terms about what we're going to be discussing for two, for eight weeks. This is my 12th budget that I sat through. When I did federal budgets for nine years during my career, as far as city priorities are concerned, I will always put public safety number one and infrastructure right up there with it. You don't have the safety and the police and fire. If you don't have the streets, the electrical, the sewers, water lines, if you don't have that, you don't have a city. Anything else is gravy, whether it be parks or pools or whatever. They're great, but if you have to sit here and make fiscal decisions, first priorities for me are in those areas. If you wonder about it, just look at what LA is going through, having to raise, they're so far behind, they'll never catch up on their infrastructure improvements or the number of police. I remember when we used to have a 50% reserve, then we dropped to 35, and then it dipped into the 20s, and we're sitting 31. Eventually, I want to see the reserves brought back up to 35%. Glendale's a rare city in the state of California. Some people think we're a fat city, and we have money like crazy. But we're a conservative community historically, and we have the luxury of not having to do the enormous cuts that a lot of other cities are going to have to do in terms of raising fee rates, cutting positions all over, taking staffing away from their parks, phasing every fee in the world to try to meet budget, and that isn't even going to help those cities. I know we'll be touching on it, but I noticed on the one side, the enterprise fund, the expenditures greatly exceed the revenues. So like we have an item tonight on a way to cut the revenue even more. I think we have to be very cautious of when we start giving breaks in our different funding areas. I don't think that's the right thing to do. I presume this question for the two of you, that you've cranked in the Americana projected revenues, sales tax, that's all cranked in, and the Embassy. So everything, those two are in. The Gardens, the hotel at Wilson and Brin are not in yet, correct? Too soon to put them in. So I've said what my concerns and priorities are. We all know that the state is in tough times and the federal government. I know I've sat here for years, and I don't think anybody in the United States of America, including the Federal Reserve, whoever you want to talk to, could project the kind of tough times this country is now going through. Nobody. Say we were too optimistic. Well, name a city in the United States, name a state government or the federal government that could look forward and see what has happened here. There was talk initially about we're not in a recession, we're not a recession, and you started to hear people once in a while saying, "We're in a recession." Now virtually everybody agrees we're in a recession. And I said, "Someday, if things don't turn, we're going to hear somebody use the word depression," and I've now heard it. depression," and I've now heard it. So where we're going to go in the next year, I think the Federal Reserve would like to know if any of you can inform them. We just have to remain fiscally conservative. I can see the easiest way to start is not filling the vacant positions, because that's millions right there overtime, and ones that come open during the year, trying to do the same thing with those positions, yet allow the city manager on a case-by-case basis determine if that vacancy needs to be filled to make for particular reasons. I'll support whatever the police need to do their job. It's very naive to sit here and think that we have too many police and just don't know what's out there. Police know, and the talk I've done with them, yeah, there's great need for more police. And if you wonder about that, then just talk to residents who don't like speeding traffic in this community and want it all stopped. Talk to the public that wants more police in the parks. Well, I guess we need more police. So anybody that says, "We have too many police," wrong. And if you want to go down the road of having volunteer fire departments, Sierra Madri and Elaine Aguilar are trying to handle over there, right now they have a thousand on the Hill. We can't operate with half-staffed fire departments either. You know, if there's ways to trim or reorganize in the fire department, I know when we name a new fire chief, he'll be looking into that stuff. It's not a question of this city and any department sitting still. Every year, whether we talk about it here or not, city manager and executives are looking at ways to trim. My thirty-seven years' career in the civil service, every year I heard the same mantra about, hey, we got to get more efficient, we need to cut costs. I was down in the working trenches with all the other people, we'd sit there and say, "What are they talking about? Get more efficient, do more with less." That is only talk by management. So if you want to talk realistic, you don't talk continually year after year about efficiencies and cutting costs. Base reality, nothing in this life is free. Takes a lot, a lot of effort, a lot of dedicated employees to keep a city operating the way it should. The city has existed for over a hundred years, one of the premier cities in the state of California. I'm proud to be a member of this council and a member of this community. So I will stay with what I said on infrastructure, police and fires my top priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Let me go next to councilmember Yusefian.
Board of clarification, Mr. Mayor. You said twenty minutes?
I think we can afford you that.
Okay. Just want to time myself to make sure. Before I say what my priorities is, I'd like to have some clarification on the slides from the staff. On slide number three, the numbers that were given on the CIP says the maintained CIP funds. Could you tell me, and refresh my recollection and memory, does this maintaining the CIP funds, does this mean that we put that one point five million dollars for road improvement back in? Is that back in now? Because we took one point five million dollars for road improvements so we could purchase property. So, I mean, we took some money out of those.
I think the answer is that the CIP that you adopted, you increased roads significantly and then pared it back slightly by one point five million dollars. This does not restore the one point five.
That is correct. It does not restore the one point five, so we have no additional money for street reconstruction in oh-seven, oh-eight, or oh-eight, oh-nine. Starting in nine-ten, we have a million and a half every year.
More.
More. So how much do we have this year for road improvement? We have one and a half million dollars from the CIP, plus we have four million in the gas tax. Okay, so we have the gas tax plus one and a half.
All of the gas tax plus one and a half.
So we don't have the additional one and a half that we were going to do? That's correct.
We only have the first one and a half.
Got it. So that was, that's one thing I wanted to ask. On slide number four, you show, slide number four, this is for, which one, what's the top liability fund?
Just liability.
Yeah. Okay. Five million dollars. Oh, it's the red, I can barely see it. Sorry. Because, yeah. The five million dollars, it says decreasing claim accrual. Could you tell me what that five million, we had that actually in cash? No. What this is, is... Is there anticipated that, so you anticipated that you may have five million dollars worth of liability for a certain project, and so you're eliminating that because that project has been paid?
Let me, let me try this if I can. This fund is rather unique because it tries to, every time we have a claim, and even before you have a claim, we try to anticipate what the expected cost and eventual payout would be on a given claim. So, and those all add up as liabilities in the fund, so to speak. That's why Ron and Bill look at your cash position in this fund to get a real sense of where the fund, where the fund's position is. Because depending on how any number of claims have been reserved, it's called, will subtract from your assets to give you, in this case, a deficit position in the fund, even though you have a very positive position in cash. This five million dollars is related to those hillside claims that were actually settled. So at the time that you know what the cost is going to be, in this case, it was in the neighborhood of eleven million, eleven and a half million dollars total, well, then you can back out the reserve that had already been taken out because you are then going to actually reduce your cash position.
But that five million dollars was originally there when we started with the beginning fund balance of two point eight, correct?
Yes. I guess correct.
Yeah. So with that five million dollars being there, you ended up having two point...
But keep in mind, the five million dollars reduced the beginning fund balance. So here, you're taking out, the five million dollars actually becomes a positive impact on fund balance because it's being taken away from, from it having been deducted from reserve.
My issue is thirteen million dollars is cash, it's real money.
Right.
Insurance premium, nine hundred and eighty-four thousand, real money, cash.
Correct.
Seven hundred and eighty thousand, real money, cash.
Correct.
And then you're taking five million dollar imaginary money that does not exist, it was never there, out of that total number, and you're ending up with ten million dollars. So tell me where the logic of that lays.
Sure.
If you had that five million dollars in the liability account, that's a whole different ballgame to me. You had five million dollars there, and then you paid eleven million dollars, you already had five, so you could reduce that from your thirteen. How could you reduce five million dollars from thirteen, which you never had the five million in the first place?
Let me try this, Mr. Mayor, if I can. The reason is, Mr. Yusefian, the six million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars isn't necessarily real money either. You're dealing with a fund balance that is a representation of both the cash position in the fund, as well as all of these expectations as to what people like attorneys and claims adjusters think these claims might end up being, and they become reductions from your fund balance. The six point, six million, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars is part your cash position, but also less all of these expectations that haven't come to pass yet. And it's only when they come to pass that they have an impact on your cash position.
So what is my cash position in that account right now? Your cash position today is approximately two million dollars. It started cash, it started off seven one oh seven, above nine. Okay.
So you have a positive cash position, it's not as great as we'd like, but it's a positive cash position versus a fund balance, which is representation of cash, as well as these expectations, which are not cash, of negative almost seven.
So if you have two million dollar cash, and you're anticipating six point seven million dollars in expenses, so in reality, you're short for something. Okay, well, you make that six point seven. What this six point seven actually is, is cash of two, okay, and expectations of eight point seven. Okay.
Which gives you a negative position.
Okay, that makes sense to me now. I understand. Then that's a negative six seven. You see, you guys know all these numbers on the back. I don't. That's why I'm asking the question to clear that in my head, what the actual number is.
Let me interrupt for just one quick second, just procedurally, so people understand what's going on here. I'm not, I see my colleagues raising their hands, there's no way I can jump in fast enough to acknowledge you. As long as the conversation, as long as my colleague's getting his answers, as long as nobody's stepping on each other and so on, please feel free to have a discussion. I think we're adults here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, let me just point out then, under option B, which is the recommendation for stabilizing the CIP, adjusting the contribution of the general fund and stabilizing this fund, the six and a half million dollars there, two and a half million from general fund and four million from other funds, is real money. And that going in to this fund then boosts your cash position to closer to eight and a half million dollars. And you'll see that fund balance, the red number, goes from being almost seven million dollars negative to three hundred thousand dollars negative because your cash position has gotten so much better, but the expectations on what you may incur in the future by way of claims continues to be greater than the available cash. But as Ron points out, that's okay because those are expectations which may or may not come to pass, and they are over a longer period of time than the one year we're looking at.
Okay. So I got that answered.
That's question one.
Right, right. But I think it's an important one because I need to understand where our money goes because I keep spending that money, which is real money, and that, and that's what I wanted to know, how that was working out. Okay. All right, on the other item, I understand the rest of the numbers, we will go over it later. So as far as May twentieth is concerned, I may not be here, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to let you know that. Directions from the council. For myself, let me tell you where I come from. I've been paying attention in city council budget study sessions a long before I even was on the council. A lot of times, the meetings didn't even take place in this room, they took place in the conference room. And you used to go in the conference room, and there were maybe about two or three people. And we would sit in the back when the council would sit on the table with the department heads sitting around the table, and some of them would have to sit with us. Nevertheless, I will tell you this, the budget used to be much smaller, much simpler, didn't have as much money involved. It has changed over the years, and I would assume that would happen anyway as the city grows. I did see a situation that took place, actually, we were meeting in a different room, it was at the old planning commission room that has been modified now, in ninety-six, when at that time Sheldon Baker and Eileen Givens and Marion Plumlee, they all got together and they had over six million dollar deficit. And there was a list of all the positions, no names attached to it, all the positions. And these were positions that were vacant, and they went through position by position, eliminating positions, freezing positions, and saying, "This one you're going to hire because we need it." And they went through the list, it was very painstaking, but they went through that process and balanced the budget. They cut six million dollars off the budget. So in ninety-six, six million dollars, those days, a lot more, it's probably greater than what the deficit is today, in real money, what you could buy. So it's not the first time this has happened in this city, and I don't think it will be the last either. All agencies go through the same process. I think this type of opportunities gives the city government opportunity to get leaner and meaner. And I have not worked for civil service, I'm in private business. We do that mantra of leaner, meaner every day. It's every day. You have to compete with another or at least ten other people who are leaner and meaner than you, and they can do it faster and cheaper. If you want to survive, that's the name of the game. That's how capitalism works. Or you could become a socialist country or a communist country, and at that time, the government gives you whatever they want, and you produce or not produce. And we've seen examples of that country, what happens? That's why Soviet Union is no longer. Doesn't work. Doesn't work when people show up to the work and do nothing and go home and take something home with them. So I think it's important for all agencies, whether they're federal, local, county, city, to be meaner and leaner any time they can without sacrificing quality. And that, to me, is the important part, is the quality. In my business in construction, you can get something done cheaper, but not necessarily better. The trick is to give you that good quality for a lower price, and that's what we try to achieve in my business. And I think that's what I'm trying to get in this city. There are opportunities to save money, and I don't go out there, if I'm going to balance a budget, the first thing I look at my checkbook, and everybody, every citizen in this country is doing this right now, is, you know what? What are the frills? You cut the frills out. You don't go to movies as much. You don't eat out as much. You don't spend all the stuff that you don't really need. In government, guess what is one of the frills? Your overtime. We have departments that have large overtimes. We have to reduce that. I'm not a fool, I know you cannot do without it, but I think there are ability for us to reduce that number. There's some department in this city, they're very lean, and I congratulate them every chance I get. Police department, before our current chief came in, had some issues. Current chief came in, the direction from this council was, you know what, you got to cut your overtime. And to his credit and the staff that worked under him, they went in there and they did what they needed to do, and they reduced the number. And I think that needs to be done in other areas. Infrastructure is extremely important because that's what makes things go. You can't, every dollar you try to save in infrastructure, you will pay ten times as much later down the road. So you can't skimp on the infrastructure. But to me, I think one of the things you need to deal with, first, you go after the overtime. Next, what staffing changes and policy changes need to be taking place to reduce that overtime and to bring things into balance? You know, some departments, people just take off without even calling in to let them know that they're going to take off, and they just do that. In some other departments, if you work for the police department, you call and say, "You want to take a vacation?" If they cannot make their quota for manpower, they tell you, "You can't take it. You have to wait for another two weeks, or you have to wait another four weeks." That's the policy that we should do. We should look at some of the different departments and the policies that they do to do this. The third item is, after we freeze some of those positions, I want to know the list of those positions. I hate to say this, I want to know the list of those positions. I don't think we should just put that on the hand of the city manager, and when everything hits the fan, and then we blame him for it. We need to have our fingers dripping blood, too. So let's see those positions, and let's have some input on those positions. Because I don't want to get emails later saying, "Oh, the city manager eliminated this position and that position, and he's the one who becomes the bad guy." We were elected in this city to make those decisions, and if it's going to affect the quality of life, I need to know what those positions are and how I'm going to modify those. And the rest, I think as we go through this, I would like to have them come back to me and let me know. This is what we're going to do, how much we're going to take from overtime, how much we're going to eliminate on those positions, what it's going to cost if we do this, and what other things we could do to reduce some of our costs. And you know what? There's one thing I agree with, Mr. Weaver, and one thing only. Recession is here, and it will continue for at least another year or two. Recession is here and it will continue for at least another year or two. So our revenues will not be growing, will be coming down. I'm seeing that in real estate business. I'm seeing that in stores that I go to, whether it be Costco or Home Depot or anything else. You go to their managers and talk to them. Ask them, "What is happening with your sales?" And they will tell you, "There's a reduction of thirty percent, thirty percent in Home Depot in Glendale." People are not spending money. Fuel is taking all their money. So all that is going to translate in our revenues dropping, which is going to make this eight million go up to maybe twelve. So you wait, that will change. We need to have a budget that actually has at least a two million dollar surplus so we can deal with some of this uncontrolled stuff that's going to be coming down the line. And I'm below twenty minutes.
You are indeed. I thank you, even with my couple of interruptions. Uh, and I'm sorry you're dripping blood there. And by the way, just, just for the record, with Americana opening, uh, this week, we don't want to make any suggestions about people not going to movies or, uh, going to stores or shopping or buying, so, uh, do all of those things. Yes, sir.
I was just hoping we could, we could pick a different set of analogies as we work our way through the budget.
Other than blood and blazoning.
What's wrong with blood?
Well, uh, I'm going to go now to, uh, Councilmember Quintero.
Well, after looking at the numbers in this first presentation, I'd like to say that I believe that tomorrow morning, the sun is going to rise. The sun will rise in Glendale tomorrow morning. I wasn't quite sure, but I think the figures show that it'll, that it'll happen. Um, we have quite a bit of work to do and in terms of input and suggestions, I'm going to wait until we go further along before I make any decisions on, uh, what's best for the, uh, city and best for the services that we provide to the, um, residents. Um, I have a couple of, uh, questions. Slide number eight. In terms of the property tax at the very top, uh, the forecast for two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, um, what properties are you taking into account there?
Mr. Quintero, this is, uh, this is our latest forecast. We actually have, not only have we, uh, have the March numbers, we actually received the April payment from the county, which is after the April tenth payment that we all made as, as property owners. That came in at, at seven point one million. So this number of twenty five point five million is good within probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Excellent. Very good. Very good. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we, we might comment on that quickly because it'll, it'll have an impact on next year's projections. Uh, in Glendale, a, a good portion of our commercial properties that will be subject to things like recessions, uh, are in the redevelopment project areas. Uh, particularly susceptible, very tall buildings downtown that carry a very high value. And if indeed they see the rents beginning to, uh, either plateau or drop, you'll have building owners going in for reassessments. That's what hit lots of redevelopment agencies during the recession of the nineties. I noted in the Business Journal recently Pasadena, that has been the top office market, has seen a drop. They're actually dropping rents. You'll see the owners of those buildings who might have purchased those buildings with the value anticipating high rents, they'll be going into the county asking for reassessments. We may face some of that. Redevelopment agency will be susceptible to it. In the balance of the city, however, where we have a greater mix of properties, uh, you'll probably see less opportunities for reassessment. That'll have a significant impact on this. And the increase in price values, frankly Glendale, I don't think saw some of the significant increases you saw in other communities that were growing. So you get a benefit, you, you may get a little bit of a dampening in the, in the beginning, but also now that we've seen prices drop, we'll have some dampening on the end as well. So in property taxes, you probably won't see swings for the general city. You'll probably see some general, maybe smaller increase, but still some general stabilization increase in the cities portion. Redevelopment agency could be a different, uh, issue there depending on what happened to the tall buildings downtown.
On the other hand, San Fernando Road should greatly increase.
That's right. Should help.
The Dreamworks, Disney and...
And the addition of the Americana and hotels that are, that are happening.
Okay, um, then the major expenses in the general fund obviously are payroll and, uh, on slide number ten. Okay, in terms of, uh, department preparing plans for the following cutbacks, I also will be, uh, looking at those, uh, decisions very closely and wanting to participate, uh, with the department heads and the city manager in, uh, deciding what, uh, types of, of cutbacks would be, uh, in order. Then some of the special revenue funds, there are some huge, huge, uh, gaps there. The Home Grant Fund, Workforce Investment Act, uh, redevelopment on slide sixteen, there's some, uh, some big drops in some of the funding, so I'm looking forward to, uh, hearing from the, uh, department heads on, on those issues. The same with, uh, slide seventeen, the fire paramedic, uh, ending balance there seems to, a pretty big, uh, gap. Then the enterprise funds, uh, slide twenty-four. Um, an ending balance there when you total, uh, sewer, electric, water, parking, et cetera, that is a, uh, ending balance of six hundred and forty-seven million, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And generally speaking, is there a percentage as to how much is then, uh, used for, uh, CIP and how much is used for other? There's no ratio.
A lot of... Right, there's no ratio. And the big expenditures that you see here, Councilmember Quintero, especially for electric and water, are the spending of the bonds that were sold in February, sixty million for electric and fifty million for water. You'll also see that on refuse disposal, that has, uh, capital money in it as well. So we are investing in our infrastructure here and trading cash for an asset that will be used over, you know, decades.
Right. And speaking to the treasurer when they were issued, um, it's just amazing what an incredible, uh, deal we got on those bonds. I mean, it truly, it truly is.
If I might add a lot, that has to do with the city's general financial condition frankly, reserve levels and all of that.
Well, and it's interesting that Lockyer is in, uh, Washington and New York City, actually Wall Street hassling, uh, the entities Standard and Poor's and so forth, trying to get an even better rate because he feels that they're too high and I agree with him. There haven't been any, uh, any defaults in these municipal bonds here in California. Um, well, I think, uh, the staff did a great job of preparing these, this preliminary, uh, sort of view of what our, uh, situation is. And like I say, I'm looking forward to the coming weeks, trying to figure out how we can, uh, work through this, uh, recession, through this downturn. But, uh, everybody get up early because the sun's going to rise tomorrow. It's not, uh, the world's not coming to an end.
Well, thank you for that prediction. I, uh, let me go to, uh, my colleague, Councilmember Madriani.
Thank you. First, I'd like everyone to take a deep breath and exhale slowly. The sun is going to come up tomorrow. Quote Little Orphan Annie.
And Mr. Quintero.
And Mr. Quintero. Uh, first of all, I don't want anyone to have any trepidation on this council and this city executive staff's ability to bring this budget into line. It is going to get done. We are going to work through it. Uh, some of us might have blood on our hands. I, that might be a little bit, uh, dramatic, but, uh, if there are, uh, cuts that are going to be made, uh, you can be assured that it is going to come from the city council after full and thorough deliberation. Um, and I appreciate the work, uh, Mr. Fox and Mr. Allers have done to this point. And what you have given us is a bird's eye view, uh, ten thousand foot view of the budget. And, uh, therefore I'm going to limit my remarks to that level of scrutiny as well. As we get closer and bore into some of these, uh, funds a little bit more, I think, uh, my comments are going to be a little more detailed. Um, the first point I would like to make, uh, and one of the items where I guess we're taking a six and a half billion dollar hit, which would come very close to, uh, uh, meeting our, our current, the budget shortfall, uh, is the entire liability fund. And in the liability fund, uh, this, this amount of liability claims, um, is something that was a result of litigation. Uh, the end result of that litigation was something that, uh, very few of us, uh, with any, uh, legal expertise could have foretold or predicted. Uh, they came out, uh, as quite a shock to many of us. But in any event, this was a, and I'm talking mainly about the landslide cases, uh, for the most part, these were, uh, one-time events, uh, catastrophic events, uh, such as other cities have experienced, even though this wasn't city property that, uh, that failed like in Laguna Beach or, uh, any of the other areas where disasters hit, uh, the repercussion was such that it was the city, uh, by order of the judge that was liable for these damages. And they were large amounts. Uh, at no point, uh, leading up to perhaps the last few weeks before the judge, uh, issued his decision, were any of us aware or, uh, very, uh, confident that we would have such a large adverse liability decision made against us. So this is a, uh, as far as I can tell, a, uh, once, uh, once a decade type of hit. And looking forward, I don't believe, without disclosing any of the confidentiality of pending litigation, I don't believe that we have anything, uh, near this nature, uh, in the near forecast. Uh, that being said, those liability payments, uh, were not out the window. And if I'm not mistaken, uh, resulted in the acquisition of certain parcels of property as well. So even though it's going out as a thirteen and a half million, uh, there's no direct cash revenue returning to the city, but in terms of assets, uh, on our asset book, uh, we are definitely showing a, a plus in certain categories. Um, let's see. The, uh, the issue of the property taxes, I think, even though the economy itself is, uh, going into what's been called a recession, uh, I am fully confident in the predictions of our property tax revenues. As homes begin to turn over, that were originally purchased anything longer than two years ago, uh, I think we're going to see a net result and increase in those property taxes. Think of all the, the seniors who are moving on, uh, to, to other types of residences or are passing on, as those homes that were perhaps purchased in the nineteen fifties, sixties are being put on the market, you're seeing, in some cases, a tenfold increase in property value, which brings with it a certainly a tenfold increase in property tax. So, uh, I am fully confident that the property tax will continue to increase, uh, for the next five, six years. Sales tax, uh, may be another issue. I think we're, uh, I'm not sure if it's a thirty percent slowdown, uh, but I think possibly there is going to be a, a sales dip in the region as a whole. But what we're hoping for is, and what we care about is what's happening in Glendale. And I think, uh, you know, if you've been in the Verdugo Hills for the last three years and just come out, we have a large event occurring this weekend, which I think is going to bring, uh, huge amounts of not just sales tax, but property tax. So I'm fully confident that although the region's outlook may be somewhat dim, uh, our city's outlook, uh, certainly looks favorable. I am fully supportive of the, uh, request by the, uh, city manager to meet with the department heads to prepare, um, contingency plans to scale back, uh, five percent to ten percent of their budgets. Uh, clearly, uh, any, uh, anything, uh, that is recommended is going to come to council. It's not going to be, uh, an administrative action solely by the city manager. We're going to play a role in that. And we'll evaluate whether it is, uh, what, if it is what we think is best for the city in terms of cutting back. Um, however, I would also like to, uh, request that, uh, we also look on the revenue side. Uh, and that the department has look at potentials for additional revenue. Um, one of the means that I'm, uh, intrigued with is increasing fines on traffic violations. Traffic as we know is a huge problem in the city. Uh, I think every one of us that's seen a, uh, a speedster zipping down the street in a souped-up car have said, "Where's the cop?" And I hope that ticket cost him a thousand bucks. Um, and it's not just our, our gut feelings, those speeders also cause a loss of life due to their reckless driving and speeding. So to the extent that we may add a, a surcharge to any traffic citation that's issued, I certainly would like to explore those type of, uh, notions, uh, from either the police department or the city, city attorney's, uh, office. And I don't want to limit it to only that. That's just one example of areas for potential revenue to obviously discourage, uh, bad behavior, a syntax if you will, uh, except this, this, uh, example is for speeding. And I don't know why I'm getting picked on all the time for having an economics degree. Um, I'm sorry that, uh, I'm not one of Barry Allen's favorites. I do try to nurture warm ties with, with all of our residents and speakers before the council. I would like to be respected by them and earn their respect. Uh, but sometimes the councilman has to draw the line as to, excuse me, as to, uh, getting, uh, special briefings from Barry, uh, using his talking points or vice versa, giving, uh, a special insider's view of the city council to Barry. So, um, I also challenge his quote that I said accountability is a cute word. I'd like to, I guess Barry's not here, uh, hit and run, I guess. Uh, I would challenge Barry to use some journalistic accountability and use some ethics and perhaps use my comments and present them in their true context. I think that's only fair since he asks us for accountability. Barry, if you're out there, give us some accountability on your own. And, uh, those are my comments, Mr. Grant.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Um, I have a few comments also. Um, uh, let me start by saying I, uh, I, I am not prepared to make any kind of, uh, to, to give any specific input. It's too, too early in the process. Uh, I do have a couple of comments, uh, about things I would like to look at and some things I'd like to do procedurally and I'm going to get to that. But one of the things I want to, want to address both to, um, staff and my colleagues and the public and so on, I'd, I'd like to hope that we can keep an open mind as, uh, we go through this. Whatever ideas and beliefs and theories that we individually hold dear on the subject of, uh, these, uh, budget issues, uh, let's keep our minds open as we go through this. Um, I ask you all, the public and the staff and, uh, my colleagues to please, uh, do your best to, uh, not become too invested in any single entrenched position, um, uh, so that we lose track of, uh, of this unique opportunity. And I view this budget study process as a terrific opportunity. Yes, we have some issues to get into, but it's also a great opportunity, uh, to really partner, uh, with each other and the public, uh, from the city side and the public, uh, to examine where and how we can make some beneficial changes, um, prudent cuts if necessary and at the end of the day, understand the process that much better. Um, so toward this end, uh, I want to address a couple of things. A couple of my colleagues have, uh, tangentially, uh, danced around a delicate topic has to do with overtime. with overtime and salaries and hiring and police and fire and so on. It gets to be kind of like the elephant in the room. And I see some of my colleagues nodding because they understand this. It is, it is something that is, it's difficult to approach, but we have to approach it. And one of the reasons is that we're elected officials. We have connections to the real world. And when I say the real world, I mean the world outside of City Hall. We interact with constituents all the time. We hear what is on their mind. And what seems to be on their mind, based on what you hear at the dais, isn't always what's actually on their mind and of interest to them. Nonetheless, I have heard several of my colleagues express, and the public express concerns about overtime and salaries. So I am interested in salary freezes where contracts will allow, hiring freezes where we, where we can reasonably do so. I'd like to take a hard look at overtime and yes, even as it relates to some of our public safety elements such as fire. Yeah, the other thing is this council, as Councilmember Najarian points out, will participate with the city manager and city staff in whatever cuts or adjustments might occur. So toward this end, I'm going to ask for something kind of unusual. We have been hearing Mr. Phil Pot here for some time in small increments, week after week after week after week, five-minute increments, sometimes 10-minute increments if he has a partner with him to read half of the deal. And what ends up happening, I think, is it shortchanges me as a council member, I think, in my attempt to understand him as a speaker. I think it shortchanges our city staff. His particular focus happens to be fire issues and practices and fire culture and so on. I think it shortchanges the people from within that department who are trying to respond because it becomes a hit-and-run back and forth. Mr. Phil Pot will raise an issue. People from fire department and staff try to respond. Mr. Phil Pot comes back the next week and responds to them, plus adds a new one, a new issue, and so on and so forth. That's not the best way to get at the heart of the issue on either side. And in addition to that, it puts the city in the position, I believe, of looking like we are so defensive about some of this. And I don't think we need to be. So I'm going to ask something of Mr. Phil Pot, because he's still here and because the last time we heard him speak before today, he was talking about a six-week program of five to 10-minute increments of discussion on the subject. So I'm going to ask him if he would be willing to forego that in exchange for a 30-minute block of time to come before us and make your presentation. I'd like to hear it without different speakers, you and your partner, and without interruption and hear what we're talking about. And then, of course, we're going to hear from the city staff, who will respond to those issues, and we'll hear from our colleagues. Somehow we'll vet that and see where we are. This is what I mean when I'm talking about not being so invested or married to positions before we even get through this process, that we miss some opportunities. And so that's the direction I'd like to go. I don't know, let me just ask Mr. City Manager, I don't know when we're planning to deal specifically with issues related to overtime and salaries and practices, department practices as they relate to staffing and overtime and practices. But at that point, I think that would be the appropriate time to have this discussion. Do we have an idea on that?
The plan was for a study section on the 20th of May.
On the 20th of May, which is the problematic one.
Which is the problematic one.
Because members of this council will be attending the conference.
And we can always kick it back a week to the 27th, say.
That would be, would that be agreeable? Right. Excuse me, one sec. Let me, one second. That is assuming that Mr. Phil Pot is also agreeable to do this and because you'd be giving up your, I'm making a bargain with you, Mr. Phil Pot. It's a voluntary one on your side. You certainly have your right to do what you want to do, but I'm asking because I think, I sense from you and I know from myself and some of my colleagues anyway, that it just isn't effective or helpful for us to understand the issue broken up into week after week after week after week after week after week and five-minute installments. So if you're willing to do that, I'd like to, I'd like to try to approach it. You can come forward. Why don't you come up to the microphone first?
Just one fiat mayor, and that is, this evening, I have a presentation to make during oral communications that is not budgetary effect. But after that, the next four, we're going to deal directly with the budget. So I would be happy to consolidate those into the kind of framework that you've offered.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a problem with that idea. However, what I would not want would be to give Mr. Phil Pot that 30-minute block and then to again hear from him on the same issues and the same topics, week after week after week. But I'm not sure we can foreclose him from exercising his First Amendment right after that, whether we agree, have a gentleman's agreement or not. So that's, that's my only concern, is that this just, aside from the 10-minute blocks, we're giving an extra 30-minute block, which is going to be a continual until, I don't know when.
I understand you, and that's precisely what I was saying, that this is, this is something I want to do that I think is unusual, but it is rare that we have one individual who has some, who is basically the spokesman for a point of view, and I am asking him. He knows that this is voluntary. We are not, I'm not about to sit here and try to truncate his First Amendment rights. But he says he's willing to do it, and I'm willing to give it a shot. And on this particular issue, you're going to have some glaring faces at you, Mr. Phil Pot, if after this, we're hearing, still hearing this week after week after week. My view is that what we're trying to accomplish is to get to the end of this and make some recommendations, not to leave it as an open-ended issue. And on the 27th, if that's the day we're going to address this, I would like to get to some recommendations at the end of, at the end of that meeting. Having heard from representatives from fire staff and for Mr. Phil Pot, I assume there'll be other issues related to overtime as well that aren't necessarily related to that particular department. But let's be honest, folks, this is, this is the elephant in the room. We need to address it and move on. We're burning up a lot of, we're burning up a lot of gray cells and just spending comment period after comment period after comment period. Let me go first to Councilmember Yousafian and then to Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a brilliant idea, by the way. It's important for me to hear the whole package. And, and one thing that I would request Mr. Phil Pot to also provide is, week after week, we get this, I have him presenting away to say $15 million. I'd like to see a format just like they provide us, which basically says, "How are you going to reach that $15 million? Give me something," so you could write down, okay, you eliminate, you know, those drivers, $225,000 each, and end of the year it's this much. So show me that $15 million. And in the end, I think we may say, you know, some of that I can understand, some of them I can't. But when it's given to us in pieces, we kind of lose control of that. The other thing is, Mr. Mayor, I was, I agree with you. I think one of the things that I'd like to see our city attorney get back to us is on the issue of raises. Every year, we have contracts with all the unions. My recollection in the past has been that, just like all contracts have an opener, the opener is on both sides. There's an opener on the side of the union. They have ability to come back and open the contract, to renegotiate or amend the contract. The same ability exists for the council to go in. And if I'm not mistaken, in the past, councils who were strapped have gone back and renegotiated the raises to lower it for several years, that the city was in a hot place, and later on, coming back and, you know, reestablishing some of those. So I'd like to know, if you could do a little research, find out when that happened and what are the legalities of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
Yeah. Took me more than half the years I did on council to come to one position that I now maintain all the time, and it's just me. I'm one of five people that represent over 207,000 people and over 2,000 city employees. I hear from three or four here, they do not represent the majority of the people in this city, as far as I can tell. And believe me, I do get feedback. So I'm willing to listen. It's First Amendment. I'll be willing to listen. But I'm not going to start voting for changes based on one or two people. When 50,000, 60,000 people want to start telling me, fill these council chambers, send me letters, write in the press and say how messed up this city is, and we got to start thinking all these changes, fine. But I'm not hearing that. That's not the feedback I get out in the community. Now, maybe I'm moving in different circles. I don't know. But I'm very willing to listen. Where there's valid reasons for change, fine. But listening to three or four people get up here every week and tell us what we should do, and then giving them credence over 207,000 other people, I've got to the point now, I'll listen, but there's got to be substance there for me to decide to make a recommendation for change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Quintero, we haven't heard from you since the last round. Do you have anything to add?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Mr. Allers for all your hard work and--
The sun's going to come up tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay. Before we all get too happy and you see your council singing and skipping out of ear arm in arm, which no one will recognize, the Glendale City Council, if that happens. In any case, if there's nothing else, I would like to thank you all for your time and your expertise and your thoughtful consideration of these issues that are so important to 207,000 residents in the city.
With that, I would like to move to adjournments.
Thank you. We're adjourned.